All right, good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of August 12th. And I would like to ask you all to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. All right, we'll now move on to roll call. Chair Nemeth?
Here.
Vice Chair Avery absent. Commissioner Frogasains?
Here.
Commissioner Henderson?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Thank you. All right, thank you. May I get a motion to excuse Vice Chair Avery from the meeting?
So moved.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Frogasains and a second from Commissioner Smith. Is there any opposition to that motion? All right, then Commissioner, Vice Chair Avery is excused. Item four on our agenda this evening is the review of our agenda. Ms. Taggart?
Thank you. So you did receive some memorandums on item 8A, 8C, and 9B, along with a letter that was received prior to the meeting.
All right, did all the commissioners have an opportunity to take a look at that? I know we got them right before the meeting, so that is always a bit challenging. Did everybody receive those?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Then, item five, may I please get a motion to waive the full reading of all resolutions on the agenda for this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Smith and a second from Commissioner Frogasains. May we get a voice call, roll call on that, please?
Chair Nemeth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery absent. Commissioner Frogasains?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. The motion passes with four yes votes and one absent. Okay, item six on our agenda is for public comments on our consent calendar items and on any items that are not on our agenda. So if you are here to speak to our consent calendar, our consent calendar this month consists of the approving of our minutes from last month. Or if you're here to speak on anything that is not on our agenda, now would be the time for you to come forward. If you're here on a specific agenda item, you will have an opportunity to speak when that item comes up on the agenda. So do we have any ecomments, Miguel, on the public comments item number six that we received? Do we know? Or anybody on the line that wants to?
We do not.
You can yell really loud.
There's only no one raising their hand.
Okay, thank you so much. Yeah, bear with us, because we have some people watching virtually, and it's always a little bit of a challenge for us to handle that, but, okay. Is there anybody in the room to speak on our consent calendar or any items not on our agenda? All right, seeing nobody, that will move us to our consent calendar. May I please get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Smith and a second from Commissioner Frogasains. May we please have a roll call vote?
Chair Nemeth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery absent. Commissioner Frogasains?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the consent calendar is approved with four yes votes. Thank you. That will bring us to public hearing item 8A.
This item will be presented by Assistant Planner Jasmine Alvarado.
All righty. Good evening, planning commissioners. Before you this evening, we have a request for a time extension, number one, for site plan review 18-007 and conditional use permit 15-035. The applicant has requested a two-year time extension for the construction of five buildings, totaling approximately 18,000 square feet in two phases and establishment of a religious assembly use. As shown on the aerial photo, the project site is located at the northwest corner of East Avenue S and 35th Street East. Next slide. As previously approved, the site plan was, will be constructed on three acres, and proposed improvements consist of the five buildings, landscaping, parking lot, and open terrace and two gazebo's. The site plan depicts one driveway for vehicle access along 35th Street East, and pedestrian access is also provided on the project frontage on East Avenue S and 35th Street East. In addition, off-site improvements include half-street improvements along the project frontage of 35th Street East and Avenue R14. As previously approved, the proposed project will occur in two phases. Phase one is outlined here in blue, which will include the religious assembly facility building, the storage and utility room buildings, entrance gates, perimeter walls, parking lot, and onsite landscaping. Phase two is outlined in red and will include the meditation facility building, the monk and nun dormitories, and two outdoor gazebo's. The proposed architecture includes traditional design elements, colors, and finishes that provide for variation of visual interest in the building elevations. While this architectural style is distinctive, the colors and the building massing has been designed with careful consideration of the existing surrounding development and intended to be complementary. The building materials will consist of roof tiles, stucco finish, round columns, exterior direct, uh, excuse me, decorative millwork, and decorative concrete finishes. The proposed use is permitted within the R1 20,000 square feet zone and meets the required development standards as specified within the Palmdale Municipal Code. The applicant is proposing to operate the facility by appointment only, Monday through Friday, with services from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Sunday and Saturday. Furthermore, the time extension does not propose any changes to the previously approved design and use. So in conclusion, the three options for the planning commissioners are to approve as amended, continue or deny the project. Option one is recommended, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Alvarado. Do any planning commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? Okay, Ms. Alvarado, I do have one question. In reading the conditions of approval, condition one and condition two, it sounds, the way condition one and two read, it will not be considered inaugurated if all requirements until, if all, I'm sorry, it will be considered inaugurated if all requirements of condition two are met, and condition two says it has to be open and operating. So that sounds as if this wouldn't even be considered inaugurated until the entire thing were built out and done. And I don't know if that was the intention, or that sounds harsher and more restrictive than some of our other conditions we've had in the past.
So these conditions were carried over from the prior approval since it was a time extension. Since then, we have included a little bit more flexibility in our condition of approval to add some language, noting that inauguration is if permits have been issued and construction is initiated and ongoing. So if it's the commission's desire, we can certainly add that language to condition number two.
Okay, I would, this is on page 27, I'm sorry, in our paperwork. I would feel as if that would be a friendlier way to do things, instead of making it that nothing is even inaugurated until it's up and running. That sounds restrictive. So would we be able to amend that with proper wording to make that?
Certainly, I can read the wording into the record.
Okay. I would appreciate that before we get into the discussion. Okay, thank you very much. Then at this time, I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on item 8A, you may come forward and state your name. You will have three minutes to speak, and it's not a dialogue. When you come forward, you will be able to share your thoughts and concerns, and we will listen. We'll take down any questions, and we will try to get them answered by the end of our discussion. So is there anybody here to speak on item 8A? Is our applicant here? Okay, could you please come forward? We are well, thank you. And what is your name?
David Paul.
Okay, thank you.
David Rogers.
All right, thank you for being here tonight.
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure that you have read and understand and agree to all of the conditions. I know there was one addendum to the resolution.
Yes.
So you're fully aware of all that. And if we do change condition number two to be a little bit less restrictive, is that acceptable to you as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that, too.
And do you know when your timeline is? I remember approving this the first time, and I drive by there and I always say, oh, is something going to be happening? So do you know, do you have a building timeline, just out of curiosity?
Well, we're ready to get started right away, you know. We have the underground sub ready to go, so we're trying to get boots on the ground as soon as possible.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do any commissioners have questions for the applicant? Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right, is there anybody else here to speak on this item? Then if there is no opposition, I shall declare the public hearing closed, and either get a motion or have a discussion.
Have we, do we change the language later, or do we, do we change the language that you requested before we vote?
We would, Megan, do you want to, can you give us the wording of that right now, and then we can make sure that we vote as amended?
Sure. So the suggestion would be for condition number two, which is on page 27 of the staff report, we would put a period after the resolution number, where source is PC 2021-019. The next sentence, we would omit where it says, "and the use is open and operating," and we would include a sentence that says, "The SPR shall be considered inaugurated if applicable building permits have been issued and above-ground construction has been initiated and is ongoing. cessation of construction for more than 180 days shall result in a lapse of this site plan review."
I'd like to make a motion to approve as amended?
Point of clarification, is that as amended by the planning manager and as amended by the memo?
Yes.
Both amendments?
Both amendments.
Correct.
Thank you.
With that understanding, I'll second the motion.
Okay, so our motion is to adopt the resolution 2021-19, approving conditional use permit 15035, time extension number one, and site plan review 18007, time extension number one, and find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review, including the amendment that we made this evening and including the amendment in the memo.
Very good.
All right.
That's an helpful.
So is there any expression on what I just said? Thanks for your insight. All right, then, with that being said, Ms. Nemeth, can we please have a roll call vote on this item?
Chair Nemeth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery absent. Commissioner Frogasains?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the motion passes with four yes votes, and Vice Chair Avery absent, so your item is approved, and you are free to leave if you don't want to hang out for the rest of our meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, and that will bring us to item 8B.
This will also be presented by Jasmine.
All righty, so before you this evening is tentative track map 83317 and site plan review 21-006. The applicant has submitted a request to construct two industrial buildings totaling approximately 60,000 square feet in two phases and subdivide the building into 18 industrial condominium units and one common interest lot. As shown on the aerial photo, the site is located on south of Grand Cypress Avenue at the intersection of Del Tutt Lane. The approximately four-and-a-half acre site is proposed to be subdivided into 18 industrial condominium units and one common interest lot. An industrial condominium is an independently owned unit that is part of a larger multi, multiple-unit building with several owners. The property owned by an individual owner consists of the airspace created by the interior build, boundaries of the individual unit. The proposed tentative track map for the subdivision of airspace to accommodate the condominiums and does not physically alter or reduce the size of the overall lot, which is approximately 194,000 square feet. The development of the industrial buildings is shown here on the site plan and will be conducted in two phases. Site plan review 21-006 includes construction of two industrial buildings, parking and landscaping. Phase one includes the first building totaling approximately 30,000 square feet, which consists of nine industrial condominium units, along with construction of the necessary on- and off-site improvements. Additionally, as part of phase one improvements, the applicant will be required to provide a temporary paved access drive aisle through phase two to align with the rear drive aisle to connect with existing development to the west of the site. Phase two will include a mirrored building footprint of the building constructed within phase one, which also includes a total of nine units and along with the completion of onsite improvements. Site plan, the site plan depicts two existing shared points of access from Grand Cypress Avenue, and the internal drive aisle has a loop configuration which allows for vehicle access around the building one and building two. Pedestrian access is depicted on the north, south, and east sides of building two and on the north side, south, and west sides of building one to provide adequate pedestrian access from all public entrances. The project meets and exceeds all PMC requirements, such as parking landscaping and height and The proposed elevations have been designed to be complementary with other industrial buildings. The building will be construct, the buildings will be constructed of concrete with varying shades of brown. The buildings exhibit four-sided architecture, varying roof lines and varying colors on all fours, four elevations. All roof-mounted equipment will be screened behind the concrete parapet, and all roll-up doors are on the interior elevation, which are not visible from the public right away. And here are just the mirrored elevations for the east building. With that, there are three options for the planning commission. The first one is to approve, to, the second one is to continue, and the third one is to deny, and option one is recommended. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Alvarado. Do any commissioners have technical questions for staff? I want to thank you for introducing me to the word industrial condominiums, because I had not heard about them.
I learned something.
All right, then, at this time, I will open the public hearing on item 8B, and I invite anybody who is here to speak on this item, please come forward, and for the record, state your name, and you will have three minutes to speak. Anybody here for this item? I know I have a speaker slip for Andrew J. Iliopoulos, so you may come forward if anyone else is here to speak on it. I'll let you go first, then.
Good evening. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have of the project. And so at that time, I'll just kind of sit back, and if you do have any questions, I'm here. And we do agree with staff in the recommendations that they have brought forward to us.
Okay, so you've read and you fully understand all of the?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much for making yourself available. I appreciate that. All right, is there anybody else here to speak on this item? All right, if there is no objection, then I shall close the public hearing on this item. And we may either have a discussion, or if somebody would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to approve resolution number PC 2021-020, approving tentative track map 83317 and site plan review 21-006, and find that the project is consistent with the mitigated negative declaration prepared in conjunction with the conditional use permit 99-9.
All right, record reflect, we have a motion from Commissioner Henderson.
Second it.
And I have a second from Commissioner Frogasains. Any discussion on the motion? All right, then let us call for the voice vote, please.
99-9, is that in the motion?
Yeah, it's right here.
I read it into the motion.
This wasn't in the option.
Oh, yeah, he read it, yeah, I think he read it from the agenda.
From the front, yeah. Chair Nemeth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery absent. Commissioner Frogasains?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
All right, let the record reflect that the motion passes with four yes votes, and Commissioner Avery absent. Thank you very much for being here this evening, and you two are free to go if you don't want to sit through the rest of this. We will not be offended.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think it was, yeah, was that the old one? Okay.
Yes.
And thank you, Ms. Alvarado, very much.
Station.
For the next item here. Okay, and that will bring us to item 8C, and a change of presenters.
And this will be presented by Justin Sauter.
All right.
Good evening, planning commission. Tonight, we have site plan review 21002 and density bonus agreement 21001, and the applicant is high-risk cost of development. Different one.
Wow, that looks nice. That was cool. Do that again, that's 3D.
Could they think of that effect also?
Okay, here we go. Site plan review 20-012 and density bonus agreement 20001, and the applicant is high-risk cost of development. All right, the applicant is requesting to construct an affordable multifamily residential development on the northeast corner of East Avenue R and 30th Street East. The development consists of seven two-story buildings with 56 affordable studio apartments and a market-rate two-bedroom manager's unit. Next slide. The development is considered permanent supportive housing and includes support services such as case management and a community room that hosts classes and training for residents. The density bonus agreement will allow for an increase in the total number of dwelling units as allowed under state density bonus law, in conjunction with three incentives or concessions, which I'll discuss later. The project will also include all necessary site improvements, such as landscaping, parking, lighting, sidewalks, street improvements, et cetera, and it meets or exceeds all Palmdale Municipal Code requirements. Next, we have amenities. Along with the support services, the development also includes a variety of amenities for the residents to enjoy. There is a clubhouse, shaded picnic area, sidewalks, and courtyards throughout the development, and even an outdoor exercise equipment circuit, so it kind of goes around the outside. The project will also include a public art installment on the corner of East Avenue R and 30th Street East. The proposed architecture is a Spanish-style prevalent in Palmdale with varying colors of stucco and pitched tile and flat roof tiles. The residential buildings will include brown wood accents and trim, while the clubhouse, leasing office, and manager's units will include blue accents. A density bonus is an increase in the overall number of housing units that a developer may build on a site in exchange for including affordable housing. The state density bonus law offers incentives that are intended to encourage the development of affordable housing, including up to an 80% increase in density. The minimum density for the site is 30 units and the maximum density is 50 units, however, yes, however, density bonus law requires that when 100% of all units excluding the manager's unit are for lower-income households, the city must grant an 80% density bonus agreement, density bonus over the base density, which would allow an additional 40 units for this development. Although the maximum density for the project is 90 units, the developer proposes to construct a total of 57. Of the 56 affordable units, 15% of those, or nine units, are required to be reserved for very low-income households. Along with the density bonus, they have three incentives or concessions. The first concession is a removal of the requirement to provide private open space in the form of individual balconies for each unit. A 10% reduction in the requirement for common open space. The project is required to provide approximately 71,000 square feet of open space and will provide approximately 48,000 square feet of common open space. And finally, a reduction in the requirement for common laundry facility appliances from a ratio of one washer and dryer for every five units to a ratio of one washer and dryer for every 15 units. Also tonight, you will see a memo before you regarding a comment letter staff received from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife on the initial study. In order to address the comments from CDFW, minor change, minor edits were made to the mitigation measures from the project as outlined within the attached mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program before you and the draft conditions of approval. Planning commission has three options tonight. Option one is to adopt resolution number PC 2021-022, recommending city council approval of the density bonus agreement and approving site plan review 20012 as amended and adopting the MND and MMRP as amended. Option two is to continue the project. Option three is to terminate the project, and option one is recommended.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sauter. Do any commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? Okey-dokey. Then at this time, I would like to open the public hearing, and as stated on our previous items, if you are here to speak, I do have a few speaker slips, so I will call you up by name if you filled out a speaker slip. You will have three minutes to speak. If you have questions, we will write them down. We will not enter a dialogue here, but I will try to get your questions answered. And I'm going to start off with, did we have any ecomments, or is there anybody online raising their hand at this time?
There are no people raising their hands at this moment, Chair Nemeth.
All right, thank you very much.
We did receive one ecomment for this item.
Okay, so we, okay, so we received an ecomment. Can you, did we get a copy of?
No, ma'am, you did not. I can give you mine. I can go ahead and read it.
You want to read the record then, please? Okay, thank you.
All right, this was from Ramona Aloya, and the comment, it's in opposition. The comment is, "Eastside homeowners want to know why there are two proposed low-income housing complexes to be built in East Palmdale, but none in West Palmdale. If serving with what politicians love to call marginalized populations to increase diversity throughout the city, why are they not developing units for these populations on the west side? Why is the east side constantly subjected to this type of inequitable disproportionate financial and environmental racism? Why not build?" Why not build them in your west neighborhood?"
Okay, thank you very much. All right, and I do know also, I did receive an email. I believe it was sent to all of the commissioners from Abundant Housing LA. And that was sent out last week. Commissioner Henderson, did you receive that also?
In this package right here?
Came via email.
Oh. I don't, I don't know that I saw that.
There was one emailed out.
Does it go to the cityofpalmdale.org?
City of Palmdale email.
I don't know that I get all of those.
It was sent to, I'll send this, I'll shove this over there. July 27th, that's an item in support of the project. All right, then we'll get to the real people who spent their time getting here. Thank you very much for bearing with that. Sorry about that, but in this day of technology, I think the benefit is people that can't make it here do have an opportunity to comment. So that is always a bonus. So I am going to go... Alphabet order here. Edward Edmondson, are you here to speak on this item? You don't want to speak? Did I scare you? I didn't mean to scare you. All right, Edward did fill out that he is opposed to the item, to the... Okay. All right, then we will move on to Richard Fleishman. Please come forward. I have stated your name for you, but you could probably say it better than I can. So you can say your name.
I appreciate the time. As much as any thinking person understands that affordable housing is necessary, we see the stories online, we see the stories in the newspapers, we hear politicians talking about it all the time. I have to say that I agree with the email that was read prior. I don't see any of these projects being done on the west side. It seems that the east side becomes the place where politicians are able to do their thing and make a statement without having to live with it. And building apartments, in essence, overall, is going to have a negative impact for all the homeowners on the east side. So I have to say that I would really want to see the commission consider in their planning some of these projects on the west side. And that's kind of where I stand, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fleishman, for your attention. All right, I also have a speaker slip here from Mr. William Gates. Welcome.
Hi. Well, basically, I've got the same feeling that he does, that everything is happening on the east side and nobody's doing anything about it. And that's sad. We need to do something about the east side also. And moving that project onto the east side, we all agree that needy people need low income. But I don't think it all should be put on the east side. Because as a homeowner there, I know what's going to happen to the property when you do this. And I haven't heard anybody, exact any, any motions on what's going to happen when this happens. Because once it happens, it's too late to do anything about it. So what are we going to do about it? I assume it's already been approved. Okay.
As I stated earlier, I'm not going to get into a dialogue with you. If you have questions, I will try to get them answered. Because when we get into a dialogue, it takes away from your three minutes and it's not fair to everybody, so...
Okay.
I fully understand what you're saying, but this won't be a back-and-forth discussion.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, and I have another speaker slip from Daryl Foster. Come on up, Daryl, your turn.
How you doing?
Doing well, thank you.
All right, just wanted to address a, you know, a couple of questions regarding the construction and the dust flies up and trying to get that so that dust doesn't fly over to our neighborhood because we're going to, we're right behind it. So that's a concern. Watering it down to, so there's not a lot of dust flying on that side. And also traffic control. When the lights go out, there's going to be a lot of traffic and there's nobody to control the traffic. It's one car per signal. Because we're having the same issue, we're having the same issue a couple of weeks ago on R and 35th East, where the light signal light goes out and there's one car per light. And it's like a traffic jam. So both constructions are probably going to be going at the same time. You're probably going to have an issue with the lights going out again. And they're going to need somebody like a traffic control person there or somebody to direct the traffic or something so it doesn't get out of control, if, if it gets passed. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, that is all the speaker slips I have. Is there anybody else here who would like to come forward? All right, come, come on up, please tell us your name. And you have three minutes to share your concerns, ideas, opinions.
My name is Monica Sloan, S-L-O-N-E. And I'd like to object to this travesty. Anyway, in the Journal of Sociology and Social Welfare, they did a study, a comprehensive review of receiving community studies. Their research found that in more affluent neighborhoods like the west side, deconcentrated poverty did not have a significant impact on the neighborhood as long as reconcentration did not occur. While in the more vulnerable neighborhoods such as the east side, those with low to moderate house values that had already been steadily declining previously were more inclined to have negative effects. So they've done studies. This is from the Journal of Sociology and Social Welfare. And this study was done at the University of Arizona. So there's documentation for what these people are saying, objecting to building more low-income housing in the vulnerable area. So they're right. If they want to have poverty level facilities, they should go to the west side where it's not going to have that negative impact that they're going to have in the east side. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sloan. All right, and somebody else, please come forward.
My name is Jose Ariano. I'm a, I'm a homeowner off of Avenue R, kind of right across, directly across the street from where the project is being recommended to be built. I oppose this project, you know, for a lot of the reasons that were already stated. And just from hearing like the first statement, it kind of, you know, it kind of seems like, in a sense, and this is historically, it's like redlining, right? Like in poverty-stricken communities or not, the opposite of affluent communities, we build low-income housing. I come from low-income housing. And moving to Palmdale, I made a choice to move my, I have five children, move them out of a community that was full of low-income housing. And when you look around those communities, it's mostly black and brown people there, right? And so where I, where I live now, I see people of color that are, it seems like we're barely getting our footing. You know, it's not an affluent community, there, it is vulnerable. The 7-Eleven, I've watched, I've been here three years now. I've watched it get progressively worse. Graffiti on the wall, 7-Eleven's a hotspot. Right across the street from where the project is designated to be created is already beginning to be a hotspot. And I guess I, my question to you guys is, why not the west side? Why not integration as opposed to like centralizing poverty? Because that's historical. That has happened to us historically in Los Angeles, and this is LA County. Historically, we always want to go to a community where we're barely getting our footing. You know, there's, there's a little bit of safety. We feel a little bit safer, right? And we want to build low-income housing in a community that's barely starting to get their footing. And I feel like, why not the west side? Why not in a community that can give people actually a different experience? Can create opportunities? You know, there's, there's more job opportunities on the west side than there is on the east side. And historically, that has been proven to keep communities in poverty, you know, less jobs, less resources. And, you know, and then that being right across the street from a hotspot. So I definitely oppose it. I don't oppose low-income housing. But it's just like, historically, we've done this, you know? And to me, it seems like, you know, we can go back and look at it, it's like redlining. I can't afford a house on the west side. I'm brown, I'm a young brown man, I can't afford a house on the east side. If we're looking to give people of color opportunity, then let's build this project on the west side where they'll have a different experience, there's more job opportunities. And, you know, then I think it's time for us to move into, as a society, integration. Why centralize, you know, low-income housing to where most people of color live? That, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ariano. And is there anybody else to, here to speak? Please come forward.
Thank you for having me. My name is Frida Green. And I moved here from LA, south-central LA. And I moved here and I thought I really came up. I was able to buy my house. My taxes are extremely high, but it's affordable. I came here because I thought this was great. People were nice, the traffic was good. And now you're putting me back in this situation. New, not per se, but putting me back in the situation where I came from. And so by me being able to afford my own home out here, I sold an apartment building in LA because it was getting too much. Now I'm, I'm going to be dealing with the same thing all over again. I agree with everyone that has something to say. The west side is always so affluent. Everything is so pleasant, everything is so nice. I would love to buy a house on the west side, can't afford it. My taxes tell me, stay right where you are because you're doing okay. But the way it's set up now, it's like we have no voice. My taxes pay for things, for the community. But it seems like my voice is not being heard, even if I had something to say. And I, I just don't think it's fair. So if we had the same opportunity as the west side, I don't think you would hear any opposition. But I am opposing this whole thing because it's just one situation after another. And there's land on the west side that they can purchase as well and put their, their buildings over there as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Green. And I have one more person who would like to speak.
Chair Nemeth. We do also have some people with their hand raised, too.
Oh, perfect, okay. I'm not ignoring you, online people, we'll get to you.
Hi, my name is Carmen Shumayvet.
What's your last name, I'm sorry?
Myvet, Myvet. I just moved out here, I just bought a house out here last October. And it's a new-built house. It's on a new construction home. It's on the east side, the further east side off of like 70th by Knight High School. And they're supposed to put 118 single-family homes, but they're going to be affordable, I guess, a housing, affordable housing, right next to the high school. My house wasn't cheap. Those houses, new, brand-new houses, aren't cheap. So it's not like it's low-income and low-income people over there. So for them to just, right after I moved over there, they said they were going to put affordable housing. Like I, like everybody else said, that's great, everybody needs that. But if you're just moving into a brand-new neighborhood that they're building, and they're building another one over there from a builder called Brookhaven, those are going to be brand-new homes. And you bring in these other people and people, the people that sell the homes, they're not telling you, oh, they're putting affordable housing next to where you're going to be living. Because they might not buy if they're doing that. I could have bought a house on the west side. But they have these new homes over here. And, you know, everybody wants something new. So I just feel like they shouldn't be doing, you know, especially without telling people. Because my coworker friend, we both work together. I told her about the neighborhood. They came over there, it was nice, it's quiet, you know, far east side. She bought a house around the corner from us. She sent me this article online about them building the stuff. So I'm looking it up. Then I seen the comments, the one that you guys read from the other lady. You know, and they were complaining. And they were saying the same thing, like, why don't they put some of this stuff on the, on the west side? Why they got to put everything on the east side? So I'm just saying to people that's new out here and they don't even know what's going on. Like you don't have to come to these meetings to find out this type of stuff if somebody else has to tell you. You know, I don't feel like that's right. So they should try to diversify things because they're not doing that by putting everything in a certain area. It needs to be a mix, you know? And that's what's fair to everybody. Because I feel like where I live, it's nice, it's quiet, you know? I don't see nothing going on. Like I said, where I live at, it's a mix of older homes and newer homes because it's a mixed community where they stopped building in 2009 when they had the, the crash. So that builder stopped building, but then this builder came in a couple of years ago and started building new homes. So where I live, my block, everything is, is new, is clean, is nice. Not saying that affordable housing is going to bring bad people, but sometimes it does. It's, it's a mixture of people, it's the bad with the good. And sometimes the bad messes up the good. So that's all I'm saying.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Nemeth. All right, and do we have any other people here to speak on this item? Please come on forward.
Evening, thank you. My name is Ramona Loyal to everyone, hi. I'm here in opposed to the projects being built in our community. For those of you who don't live on the east side, we have several of them already. The largest community that I've recently been to and seen myself of low-income housing or affordable housing for marginalized populations is the Kensington Project in Lancaster. It is huge.
Please address all your comments towards us. We're the ones making them.
It's, it's huge. It also is for how, for homeless people. It also has the same described criteria that was described in the, in the, in the PowerPoint that we saw, in the presentation that we saw. It has laundry rooms, it has buildings, it has security, it has all of these, all of these amenities that quite frankly, a very minute part of the people who live in those buildings participate in. I know, I know someone who lives there. Very few people in that building pay rent. Very few people in that building use the amenities that are provided for them. As the, as the woman stated earlier, there's statistics and data that's been provided socially that says you cannot build an economy on low income. If we're taking homeless people and putting them in a facility, what income do they have to contribute to our community? What income? If it's all concentrated on one side, we're not going to be getting a lot of stuff from, from this building or these buildings. And they continue to build them on the west, on the east side. I have one disagreement with a comment that was made that if this were happening on the west side, you probably wouldn't get people here. I seriously doubt it. I think that's the reason, one of the largest reasons why buildings like these are not built on the west side. I understand the economics of the property being less expensive, of people who actually, companies who build affordable housing, and of the, the, the financial benefits that they get from building affordable housing. I understand all of that, and so do most of us in our community.
You have 15 seconds left.
Okay. Definitely, all of these things are able to be done on the west side. And I believe on the list that was shown, you have the option of denying this project. There is, there was that option. So what I would like to ask all of you is what is it going to take to stop this project from being built? If you have the power to deny it, then what will it take for us to stop it from happening? And you, as our representatives appointed by the city council, to provide us with that option?
Thank you very much. All right, and we got somebody else who had their hand up? You still want to speak? Come on down.
My name is Martha Kaufman. I've been living here on the east side for 31 years now. And when we first came out here, we did have a lot of... And uh when we first came out here, we did had a lot of issues with, you know, bad people coming into the neighborhoods, stealing and stuff like that. Um, we already have I think two big huge low income apartments already around us. And then you wanna add another one there. Our neighborhood is finally starting to, you know, pick up, you know, people caring, taking care of their property. And bringing in another low income place is just gonna take things right back to where it was. You know, and we're just afraid that, you know, we're not gonna be able to be safe anymore. Okay, so I oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kaufman. All right, is there anybody else in the room?
Hi, um, my name is Della Acosta, I've lived on the east side. I've seen things come and go, I I oppose this project for the only reason because it's low income again. And you guys aren't bringing anything over to the east side for food and all these other things, but you wanna put low income over here all the time. And doing all that, you're not bringing anything to us, so you wanna add low income over here, but where are they gonna go to do anything? I mean, you're not doing anything for the east side, you're not bringing any food, any services over there. You just keep dumping these low income people on us, so I I just don't see why you can't do it on the east side, east side ha- I mean, the west side, they always have everything. You've got the mall and everything going over there, and and you're just, you just keep dumping things. And you're not doing anything for us, you should actually work some of it over to the east side and not keep bringing everything to the west side. Um, I just oppose this totally again, for this, you know, reason, it's just, you guys are putting, dumping everything on us, you need to move on to the west side. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Acosta. All right, is there anybody else here to speak? Come on up. I'm glad you guys are all having courage to speak, and I haven't scared you, so that's good.
My name's Judah Toldadano, I live on um thirtieth and R on the opposite corner. Um, we finally have seen our homes increase in value to over five hundred thousand dollars now, which we're very proud of. And um I've been there for thirty years, I moved there when I was a teenager with my family. And um the park across the street, McAdams Park, has become very unsafe. The liquor store on the corner is also very unsafe, we hear helicopters almost on a nightly basis. Um, to exercise, I don't go to that park, I drive to Avenue P and thirtieth, Street West to go exercise at that park because I don't feel safe in the park next to my home, which takes me two minutes to walk to. If my mom wants to go to the park, I have to go with her because I feel it's not safe. And I feel this project across the street from McAdams Park is just gonna add to that. There's people parked out there on a daily basis in their motorhomes, all day long, drinking in the parking lot, having a good old time. Once the parking lot shuts down, they move to wherever they go, then they come back, eight o'clock in the morning, same thing. And we're just sick and tired of that being across the street from us, and this project is gonna bring more. Definitely no questions asked, it's gonna bring more of that element that we do not need. We're trying to make our environment, our neighborhood safer and not more dangerous, and I oppose this with all my other neighbors, one hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You only get one shot at it, sorry sir, you had your time. I gotta be fair to everybody. All right, um Miguel, are there people with their hands raised in our virtual viewing world?
Yes, there's one hand raised, eh uh Mr. Juan Carrillo.
I know Mr. Juan, is that the same Mr. Juan Carrillo that I know?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, Mr. Carrillo.
Well, thank you for for having me, uh first and foremost, I wanted to thank the speakers and all those that participated in this democratic process. It is one of the great things that we have to be thankful for so that uh we are able to be heard and the decision-making bodies such as yourselves can listen to us. I am speaking tonight as a resident of District Four. However, I do feel that I must disclose that I am council member Juan Carrillo, representing District Four, which is where this project is being proposed. Uh, that's all I'm gonna say uh as far as being a council member, now again, I'm speaking as a resident. Again, I wanna thank you all for speaking on this item. I wanna thank those that uh have the courage to say, why not on the west side? That is something that I speak on almost on a monthly basis at the council meetings. Because I do feel that services need to be equally distributed throughout the city. I feel the sentiments of those that spoke tonight about why not on the west side. That is not to say that I don't support this project, I fully support it. In fact, the applicants uh reached out to me, we had a phone conversation about the project, and I had the same concerns that everybody mentioned. But I I do know that this housing crisis that some of you mentioned is real. And yes, politicians talk about it, and yes, we try to find ways to find a solution to it. I do know that the applicant has reputable um projects in other places, they actually send me addresses of uh projects in other cities that we all kind of want to visit and see how well they're managed. Let's remember that uh these kind of projects do come with services, and they do come with conditions, there are security conditions tied to this project for those residents that know, don't know that. So they are responsible for maintaining the quality that they are promising to the planning commissioner and to the residents in the city of Palmdale. I support it also because it is something that will benefit the area because it will bring rooftops because commercial developers look at the rooftops in order for them to bring services, businesses, things that we are lacking on the east side that are not lacking on the west side. Even though it is a low income project, and even though many residents mentioned there is so very too many low income projects on the east side, I believe that this is a moral thing to do, to help those that are homeless, those veterans that fought for us to have deliveries that we have, we have to be able to provide housing choices for them. And again, I want to ask you uh all those that spoke about why not on the west side to join me. If you pay attention to the council meetings, I do speak about these things. Join me in making sure that the services are equally distributed throughout the city. And I'm not saying that uh low income projects like this need to be on on the west side, as far as having services distributed.
Mr. Carrillo, you have about fifteen seconds left.
Well, thank you again, because I'm speaking as a resident um of District Four. I am limited to the three minutes. But this conversation is not.
That felt really good for me to say, by the way, so.
That that's not gonna end with the nine seconds, so I second. So I ask you again, all of you that spoke about this project, and join me, you can contact me, we can we can together bring what we need to have on the east side, and we can together make the east just as beautiful as the west side. Bring that to the attention of the rest of the council members, because sometimes I feel like I'm the only one that speaks about this, and they they don't listen to one of us, they listen to all of us. Uh Chairman, thank you, I appreciate the time, and I'm gonna give a little more than three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Councilman Carrillo. All right, and do we have any more hands raised in the virtual world?
There are no more raised hands at this moment, Chair Nimitz.
Okay, is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak who has not yet spoken? Alrighty, then, if there is no opposition, I shall close the public hearing on this item. And I do wanna say thank you to each of you for coming out and standing in front of us and sharing your very, very heartfelt um feelings, opinions, thoughts, um doing some research, and and I I fully appreciate that, because I don't think we've ever had this many people at one of my meetings, so it's kinda exciting. Um, even if you're all hiding behind masks, but. Okay, so we can um have some commissioner discussion on this, and then we can figure out what we wanna do, who would like to start?
At the beginning, we had questions about the construction uh stirring up dust. Um, do we typically have um uh requirements in the construction standards that require them to keep the dust wet, so it doesn't bother the neighbors?
Yes, is our applicant here or somebody representing our applicant?
They are conditioned to provide a dust control plan to the Ano Valley Air Quality Management District.
And that is during the for time of construction?
Yes, it's yeah, twenty six one, condition twenty six.
Okay, all right, applicant, sorry, you got up and I need to go down. Thank you very much, um to help us address.
Good evening, my name is Mo, Mohana with Hybridge Costa Development, thank you for having us tonight.
Okay, so the dust concern for the residents in the area, that was one specific question. Um, if if the project were approved.
Yes, there are specific requirements for dust control, watering, uh the site is one of them, uh but there's specific mitigation uh procedures that are listed in the uh staff recommendation that must be followed. Uh, they're standard and they're followed in all our sites, so we're very cautious and careful about that. Uh overrun uh from the site when watering it, when keeping it watering, keeping it, keeping the dust down. So those are measured, there are measures that are strictly followed, yes, we are committed to those that are listed.
Okay. I don't know that you can answer the question as to why not on the west side, but I would imagine it's because you own the land or somebody owns the land, and it is zoned for multi-unit, uh multifamily housing, um, so.
That is correct, we follow the general plan and zoning, and that's what we focus our site acquisition on.
Okay.
So just for clarity, so is my understanding that you did look at the west, you did look at the west side and realize you could not build on the west side because of zoning?
No, I can't specifically say uh west side or east side, we do look throughout the city of Palmdale. So as much as I'd like to say, I would like to take a look at a site and buy it. It's not just a zoning, and it's not just a general plan issue. It's an issue of a willing seller that's willing to sell, it's an issue more important than price and affordable housing. The city knows just processing through the city, it's been over two plus years, the first neighborhood community meeting we had was pre-COVID. I don't even remember that day, those days. But the reality is, in order to develop affordable housing, there's specific timeframes that you need, that the landowner needs to work with you to get approvals, to get funding from the state, these are three to four years minimum. Most landowners today will come and say, I want, you know, twenty day, you know, thirty day closes, quick closes. In addition to uh the uh working with the landowner on the terms that are sufficient, the state requires certain uh um speci- uh certain items, for example, there are certain census tracts that are designated, difficult to develop, or you know, other census tracts, and we we start focusing on those census tracts. In addition, there is a requirement for surrounding service, services. There's a minimum, there's a list of of several surrounding services that are required that have to be within minimum distance. Uh, one of them happens to be a library, so I always say to the state, for goodness sake, take that off the list, because you're forcing us to be within one mile of a library sometimes. Uh, but there are many other factors beside west side, east side, general zoning, planning that go into the consideration, it is a myriad of matrices that we have to wa- uh filter through in order to get to an area that's going to score for those programs, score on the state on a very oversubscribed program. For every five applications, one gets it, and that's not five applications here, that's at the state level. So there's many other factors besides west side, east side, besides general planning or zoning that come into that. And to find a site that works, that meets all those parameters, that has the zoning, that you can get the terms, is far and few in between. As otherwise, I'd pick up the site where I like to pick it up and develop what I'd like to develop, but that's not the name of the game.
Can you address the question as to um who will be who your target um renter would be, because it says it will be available to homeless individuals VA certified homeless veterans and non VA certified homeless veterans? Uh, what does that mean?
So there are agencies for what's called permanent supportive housing that provide uh assistance with rent for some of the rent that they cannot pay. This is not a, and those go through a system of cer- certain um county agencies. Those people apply to those agencies, those agencies vet them, credit, background, all of the above qualifications. Those agencies then come and say, you can take this and go to this community in order to live there. I cannot, and if somebody comes from the street, I want wants to live there, I say you have to go through this system. So those are, they come to us through the county agencies, and they are vetted, they work with social providers, they work with social workers. There's an onsite resident manager, there are three social workers there, if there is a VA component, there is somebody from the VA. We have online, if you have some detail, it's a very complicated process and support process that is there with those individuals. These are individuals that are working, by the way, they're not necessarily homeless. They simply need an address so that they can send a check to, they need an address so they can write it on their resume. So uh we can.
I'm going to ask everybody to please be as polite as everybody was to you while somebody is up here speaking, thank you, if you cannot be, then you may step outside.
So online, we have uh one of our uh partners, LifeStep Service Provider. And they work with these communities, they work with these services, they help these people with whatever they need, whether it's maintain the job, whether it's find the job, all of the above. And I'd be more than glad to have them give you a short synopsis of what is involved, but the amount of support that is provided here. And the one thing to know, and and I, we mentioned uh come and visit our communities, we have a community leasing up right now in Los Angeles, and I I I've heard the stories from our staff when attending. The people that walk in there are people who have a job and actually say, this is my place for me, I can stay here. They are so grateful and careful that they have a place that, and we have a very strict list of rules, that they do their best to maintain those rules. These are the people that finally found the home, went through this whole county agency program. God, I don't even understand how to go through that program personally, but go through that forum, they're so grateful that they're there that they're the best resident from abiding the rules and keeping their community, because the last thing they want to do is lose that home that they finally got, especially one that is designed to this standard. For the record, this development, aside from uh giving up about a third of our site to solve the flooding problem and of that air, one point seven acres of all of that's gonna be developed to more than of a cost of over one and a half million dollars, a problem we didn't create, but we're addressing. The rest of the development is costing about twenty four million dollars, that's four hundred and twenty one thousand dollars a unit. A home was mentioned that is five hundred thousand dollars, and I'm glad the homes are getting there. But the quality of what's being built here at four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a studio apartment, that's the cost of developed affordable housing today, please keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you, does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Just one question, will there be security on the premises?
Yes, we do have security generally in our apartment communities, because there is actually theft from outside, not theft from inside. Catalyst converters seem to be a big thing these days, so we do provide them because we will get complaints from our residents, hey, this is gated, I live here, it got stolen, so we do provide courtesy security, more for our residents than the other way around.
Just one last question, are you looking to um develop more units uh in Palmdale, uh at some future date?
We do not, Hybridge Costa currently does not have any site identified for further development of affordable housing. If there is an interest from the city to work on other sites, we would be more than glad to, east, west, or wherever the city directs. We've always, and we have worked with cities, cities have reached out to us and came and said, we have certain sites in a certain area, whichever the direction, north, south, east or west, we would like to look at that and evaluate it for us. We have done that, and we would be more than glad to do that if that's at the city's discretion and pleasure, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for being here and for answering our questions.
Thank you for your consideration.
And just for edification, um three of us up here this evening are eastsiders, so um we we do live on the east side, my children went to Palmdale High School, I've lived in my same house for thirty three years. And I I, it makes me sad that Palmdale is so divisive in its own brain about east side versus west side, this is a very personal thing for me. It has driven me off the wall. This is a very personal thing for me, it has driven me off the wall. I live in Palmdale, I support businesses throughout the city, I even go to Lancaster sometimes. But to, to be so, there is, yeah, we have a street called Division Street and maybe that's part of our problem. But one of the things that we as, as a city, we cannot, if, if something is zoned and it is in the proper zone and we get somebody who's willing to build on it, there's so much behind this that, that is so tricky and difficult. The land could sit vacant, somebody could come and say, yes, I have somebody who wants to invest money into your community. I do have to say that the recent, since I've been on the commission, this is my sixth year, seventh year, I have seen some low income housing go up, usually it's, it's been apartments. And they're really pretty, they're very well done, they're still very well kept. I think that our housing and neighborhood services group in the city of Palmdale is very attentive to that. I do believe that when our conditions were written, they were written with so much attention to trying to make this a safe place for people to live and, and to have as less of an impact on the surrounding community. There's a lot of conditions where, you know, the sheriff can go in and check it out, the, our, our neighborhood services people can go in and check it out. Here's a question, Justin, who is running the supportive services? Is that, is the city involved in that in any way or what, what is our relationship with that?
I think that'd be a good question for the applicant and our housing division as well.
Okay.
Hello, Mo, Mo Hana with Hyric Costa. You know, Life Steps is a five oh one C three nonprofit that works throughout the entire state of California, specializing in communities such as the one, we're proposing affordable housing communities. They're independent, they are not related to the city. They are paid as part of the, not only the budget from the development, but there is a funding program from the county that funds the social service workers that they provide to make sure that regardless of the operations of the community, the funds required to have social service providers onsite is constant and uninterrupted. One thing to point out on the comments is, we built our communities and we keep them, we do not sell. Thus, that is why when we look at affordable housing committees, the program is designed for affordable housing developers to build and keep long term. Our benefit is not short term, we, it's not a market rate development that we built and we turn around because we have to repay an investor, the investment stays in there for at least fifteen years. We are incentivized to maintain these communities in order to maintain the value long term. That's how we all operate, that's how we operate, that's how the developer of the next affordable housing community operates. And by the way, I better commend Steph, I want to thank the councilman for the comment he said about our company, our reputation is impeccable. And the city must have done something right because the developer sitting behind you, Metta Housing, is probably one of the best as well. So you guys are attracting the best of the best in the industry, honestly. And you can check that at every city level and every state level. The commitment that we bring to these, these communities, a long-term commitment. We built to keep, so we design it right, we built it right, because if we go cheap on a roof tile, we're the ones paying for it at the end of the day. And we maintain it right, and we hire third-party professional property management companies that specifically specialize in affordable housing rentals because they're very complicated, because of compliance. There's much stricter rules on who's living in the unit compared to the ones in the market rate. If somebody moves into unit in the market rate, the manager goes, knocks the door, makes a fuss, goodbye. We have someone living, it's a compliance issue at the state level and there's risk of non-compliance which affects our future business, affects our investment and is very serious. So rules and regulations and the way these are managed is managed at a much higher level than any market rate development anywhere in the state of California. These are regulated heavily. People who are living there, there's inspections done by the state on behalf of the IRS, who wants to mess with the IRS. In addition to that, we do our own audits, because the last thing we want is the state to come and audit anything, whether compliance, whether the number of people living there, whether income. We hire a third-party professional CPA firm that is, that is specializes in the industry to make sure these audits are taken care of. Our property management company, FBI, again, long history, so a separate property management company, a separate social service provider, a nonprofit partner, excuse me, that specializes in this, all with us, all these people specialize, this is the only business they do. We're not showing up here because someone talked about affordable housing and we needed, we've been doing this before it became fashionable to say, we support affordable housing, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any other commissioners have thoughts? Heartfelt feelings.
I think Vicki from Housing wanted to come up and say something, if that's allowed.
Yes, you may. Please say your name and let everybody know where you're from.
Yes, good evening, my name is Vicki Rozzo, I'm the senior housing coordinator here with the city of Palmdale. And I work specifically on the density bonus agreements and I also oversee the compliance of said agreement. So I just wanted to call to, to your attention that there is a management plan that has to be submitted by the developer. And so we get that a hundred and eighty days before any development. And so at this time, I do have a draft and I have been working both with Hyric Costa on making sure that they are providing the services that are going to be needed. In addition, that the place will be safe and it will provide a good housing development. As I said, we also monitor it annually, so we make sure that the property is up kept. And because we build that relationship with the managers, we make sure that if there is any issues, that they are addressed immediately. So I just wanted to share that, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Housing while she's up here? Not gonna let you get off that easy.
Just a quick question about the, the, when it's ultimately established the lighting in, in the area. There was some comments from the community about seven eleven being in that area, criminality taking place. What, but is there any compliance with their, the area has to be well lit during the evening?
Yes, so that is a requirement and that is through our Partners Against Crime Program, so public safety does address that. And that is one of the conditions for approval, if I'm learning the right verbiage now through planning, correct. And all new developments are required to be part of our PAT program.
Okay, thank you. I know that this development cannot do anything about safety issues at McAdam Park or at seven eleven, but anybody in the city who can take a look at that, please make a note of that, that, that our residents are concerned about their safety at the park. That is one of our older parks and it used to be where the Fall Festival was all those years ago, for those of you that have been here for years. And it is a beautiful park, there's beautiful old trees there, so that's something that we should be concerned about as a city as well as nefarious activities going on at seven eleven, I guess, but. I do know that as a city, we do have regional housing numbers that we have to meet, we have to be able to show that we have housing of all various levels and, and we are in approving and getting built low-income housing, it does move us closer to our achieved goals that we, we, we have to do, we have to provide housing on all levels. I have to say, I'm a little, I, I am inspired by listening to the applicant with, and, and having read through the plan that we're working towards the best that we can do as a community to, to fit everything in. I don't know if you hear me struggle, I, I, I would not want this in my own backyard, probably. But I do know that it is an important aspect of a community and, and if we build a place for people to live and they are coming there and feeling better about themselves because they have housing and they're near a park that hopefully is a safe enough place for them to go work out and even though we are cutting down their private space by the density bonus agreement, they're right by a park. And if it can improve their quality of life and somebody's willing to build in our city, I, I have to say, I would definitely be in support of this. And we do have conditions in place to keep an eye on it with the sheriff, with our housing authority, with all of that. So I, I am leaning towards supporting this.
I, I think we're all struggling with this issue tonight because it's one that could, it's passion, passion on both sides. I, I, I understand the, the issue of homelessness. I live on the east side, been there for about twenty-four years now and it is an unfortunate reality. After twenty, almost twenty-three, twenty-four years of living here in the city of Palmdale, we still have to raise this issue of east side and west side, rather than just having one side, which is Palmdale. And that is something that our leadership in the city of Palmdale has really got to pay more attention to. And I think that is a prerequisite for all of us, that we begin to show some diversity and balance on the east side and the west side so that we can ultimately have one side in Palmdale. Homelessness is a crisis out here, it's a major issue. I understand what our chairperson was saying about wanting to make sure that we have a home, that we, that we live in a community where people can exist and coexist with each other. And I'm concerned also, you know, I, I'm a homeowner in the east side of Palmdale, my property value, I'm very much concerned about that as well. So I hear your concerns and trust me, I, I can share a lot of what your concern is about. The, what, what has, what has given me a little hope tonight is just hearing what the project is going to entail and the streamlined process that they're going to go through with the homeless and people who will be coming in the community. And I recognize that they're not just bringing everybody in the community, but there's a process that they're going through. And I think that helps with that process, I heard some of you say tonight, you're not against homelessness, but you are concerned about your property value, you're concerned about there's a balance of, of homes being on the west side. Oh my God, I totally agree with you, I totally agree with you as a resident, as a community activist, but also as a commissioner and as our councilman has articulated tonight. But I, I feel a little hope, the fact that, that this company that we're dealing with right now is creating a process that, that, that people have to go through. And I think it becomes incumbent upon all of us, as our councilman has indicated to us, we have to help monitor it. We have to monitor and see what's happening in our community and that's why I implore all of you. I mean, I, I'm, I'm part of my own neighborhood watch group in my area. I make sure whenever I see some kind of criminal activity taking place, I'm involved, I get involved. I encourage us to get involved because you know what, it's not the sheriffs that's going to make a difference, it's not the housing, it's, it's going to be us that make the difference. And if we want more housing on the west side, continue to come to meetings like this, but even more so, go to the city council meetings and make your voice known, I'm glad you're here tonight, so I, I, I appreciate that. But I think there's some compliance and I think there's some rules that they have complied with. And it would be difficult for me to vote against what, what has been proposed tonight because I see that there's a process that's taking place and streamlined, so I'm in favor right now of supporting budget.
One last thing before we get a motion, I, I was intrigued by the physical design of the structures. I thought they kind of were built to more look like homes and instead of what we see as some of our older housing or even our newer apartments, they, they look very apartment-like and these are built, I think the design was to look more like houses, like five different houses, even though they are housing, you know, apartments. I thought that was, that was going to blend in quite well. But if there is no more discussion on this, is there a motion on this item? I will move to adopt resolution, make sure I'm getting it right, on PC twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two, recommending the city council approval of density bonus agreement twenty dash zero zero one, A dash seven four three seven, approving site plan review twenty dash zero one two and adopting the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring reporting program for the, prepared for the project with the amendment that we received today. A second it? Any discussion on the motion? And for all of your information, we are, if this is voted, is passed, we are recommending that the city council approve this, so you do have another opportunity to voice your concerns to them. Let the record show, we have a motion from Chair Ameth and a second from Commissioner Frogasains. And if there's no discussion on the motion, let's call for a voice vote, please.
Chair Ameth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery absent, Commissioner Frogasains?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, let the record show that the motion passed with four yes votes and Vice Chair Avery absent. Thank you all very much for coming, I do appreciate your time and your involvement in your community.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, and that will then bring us to item eight D.
This will be presented by Benjamin Fiss.
Good evening, commissioners, before you tonight is project site plan review twenty-one zero zero two and density bonus agreement twenty-one zero zero one. The applicant is Palmdale Terrace Apartments LLC. Next slide, thank you. The proposal is a request to construct a hundred and fifty-one unit affordable housing development on eight point four three acre site. It's a vacant site located at the southeast corner of Twenty-Fifth Street East and East Avenue Q twelve. The site does run through to Twenty-Seventh Street East. Next slide, please. The proposed development will consist of two, three-story multifamily residential buildings with a hundred and fifty-one combined dwelling units, consisting of a hundred and forty-nine income-restricted affordable units and two market rate managers' units. The request for approval of a density bonus agreement will allow for an increase in the total number of dwelling units as allowed under state density bonus law in conjunction with incentives or concessions. The project will provide for dwelling units of varying sizes, seventy-three one-bedroom, forty-two bedroom and thirty-eight three-bedroom units and includes onsite amenities such as offices for service providers, half-basketball court, children's play area, garden courtyard and a fenced dog park. Next slide, please. This slide depicts some of the amenities and their locations. There are also shade structures that are provided, which is of course very important in our climate, as well as a half-mile loop path around the site. There are barbecue areas as well and seating areas and a dog park for large dogs and a dog park for small dogs and a path that goes around those as well. Next slide, please. The architecture is of a style typical of Southern California and includes design elements, colors and finishes that provide for variation and visual interest in the building elevations. The building materials will consist of sand-finished stucco, lap siding, fiber cement fascia and wood grating appearance, wood trim and wrought iron. A color palette compatible with the desert environment will include an orangish-brown, beige and, as well as gray. Next slide, please. An applicant for an eligible density bonus may submit a proposal for incentives or concessions. The city shall grant the concessions or incentives requested by the applicant unless the city makes a written finding based upon substantial evidence of any, based upon substantial evidence, there are certain requirements. Next slide, please. The density bonus incentives requested for this project are an increase in the travel distance from some dwelling units to the parking area from the required maximum of one hundred and fifty feet to two hundred and sixty-five feet. Reduction of balcony sizes from the required two hundred square feet and seven feet in depth to a minimum of ninety square feet and six feet in depth. And a reduction in the requirement for common laundry facility appliances from a ratio of one washer and dryer for every five units to a ratio of one washer and dryer for every ten units. Next slide. The options are to adopt resolution PC tw- uh, twenty-one, twenty-two-one dash zero two-one approving site plan review twenty-one zero zero two recommending that the city council approve density bonus agreement twenty-one zero zero one and adopting the MND and MMRP prepared for the project, or to continue the item and direct staff to return with additional information, or lastly to deny the project. Option one is recommended.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fiss. Do any Commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? Okay, then I would, I don't have any speaker slips on this item, but I will open up the public hearing on this item. And do we have anybody online who wishes to speak on this?
We have one hand up, it is Mr. Juan Carillo.
Okay, welcome back, Mr. Carillo. Your turn. Sorry, we're having.
Thank you.
All right, there you are.
Uh, just to, uh, show the same support for this project, I think it's important for us to show support for housing units in our city so that we meet the arena numbers that we're supposed to be meeting and to have, uh, a variety of housing throughout the city. Nothing else, same support as the previous project for me, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carillo. Is that the only, okay. Is there anybody in the room here to speak on this project? And I know our applicant is here, do any Commissioners have questions for the applicant? And I'm gonna let you stay in your seat. All right. If there is no opposition, I shall close the public hearing on this item and either go into discussion or get a motion on the item.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number PC twenty-two-one dash twenty-one approving site plan review SPR twenty-one dash double oh two recommending the city council approve the density bonus agreement twenty-one dash zero zero one and adopting the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program prepared for the project.
All right, let the record show, we have a motion from Commissioner Henderson and a second from Commissioner Smith. Any discussion on the motion? All right, then we'll go with the voice vote, please. Chair Ameth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery absent, Commissioner Froggessanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, let the record reflect that the motion passes with four yes votes and Vice Chair Avery absent. Thank you very much. And you are all free to go. Not all of you, some of you have to stay. Thank you very much for being here this evening.
Thank you very much, your support.
And that will then bring us to item nine, our staff communications. Thank you. Okay, we have a presentation, um, from Mr. Rich Nolan.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, my name's Rich Nolan. I'm here on behalf of representing the new Anavertae LLC, the owners of the property of surrounding Anavertae, the Anavertae community in, uh, West Palmdale. Um, appreciate your time tonight. Um, appreciate your time, time tonight, and really, and we have a large project, uh, probably one of the largest in the city. And most of you know Palmd- our Anavertae, it's been a project that was originally approved literally thirty years ago. I don't know the exact month or so, but it's a thirty-year project in the making. Uh, there's already sixteen hundred-plus homes that have been out there. And what we've been processing with staff the last, uh, almost four years now is an amendment to the specific plan and a new environmental document that would allow the project to move forward in a kind of phased logical sequence. So with that, you are going to see us again here shortly. We're still working out some issues with staff and some of the other agencies, um, like the fire department and the school district right now. But we thought, I thought it'd be a good idea to get in front of you, just give you kind of a high-level uh, view of what we're trying to do, what we're trying to accomplish here. And I think, uh, hopefully in the next short time, out of the hundred and fifty-some conditions of approval that we expect to see, we're trying to, we're narrowing it down to two or three right now, where we're just trying to get them all synced up so that everybody's good to go with the project here, and we'll be looking forward to your support at that time. It's Ben, okay, it's Carleen back there? Okay, Carleen. All right, so I'll just, I'm gonna go pretty quick here because you've already had a long night as it is, and you'll see this again. But I wanted to speak a little bit about what the, the vision for the Anavertae community is. I, by the way, I sit on the HOA out there, so, um, this is a, my belief, many of the people out there want to see Anavertae to be completed. You know, it's, the, the existing community out there is really good, went through tough times during the recession, but it's really a beautiful community out there, it's a well-maintained community out there. Very engaged homeowners that live out there of all the homeowner associations that I, uh, sit on. This one's one of the most engaged, a lot of people come out there, of course, we feed them, that helps.
That helps.
But a lot of people come out there. Um, and basically the, enhancing the vision here really allows for the build-out of the master plan. Kind of the major changes, um, that are in here was a reduced footprint. Um, the original project had over, over five thousand homes, uh, approved as part of it. Many of the homes were in the fault areas, were up in the hillside, required blasting to get to them. So we have a much smaller footprint and by extension, we have much, uh, fewer homes, over twelve hundred homes, fewer than what was originally approved. The, um, go back one more, Carleen, I'm sorry, I wanted to speak to a couple of those really quickly. No, actually, I'm sorry, you go, you did the right thing, Carleen. You're right, thank you.
She's good at this.
Yeah. Um, this is kind of an illustration of what that plan is. But some of the features of this new home include a potential new community pool for the entire area. This will be part of the existing homeowners association out there. I mean, you can hardly go to a HOA meeting without them asking for a pool, how do we get a pool out there? So we have an area here that would support a large community pool, you know, for, not too far from the school and really centrally located within the entire area. We also have an extensive amount of community trails, that's really going to be a, a, a strong amenity for the whole project going into the open space, but even within the community through paseos. A large regional open space program, and the open space out here is a very beautiful area. It's very nat- natural, um, there's Joshua trees, there's lots of interesting things, ge- geology, obviously, um, which some people might think is, is, uh, interesting. It's a challenge for us. Um, but it will be over a thousand acres of open space that will be part of this whole care area. We have what we call our retail hamlet, which is what we see as kind of a country store. So it's a convenience market area there where residents can, instead of getting in a car and driving, you know, three miles to the supermarket, you can stop in, it's a place that's also centrally located to the whole community. So even if you're a kid after school and you want to go get an ice cream or something, you can pop in and pop out. It's not a large, it's not a Stater Brothers or Albertson's, it's really what we call a country store type of environment, hopefully with a big old porch out front and something that, you know, people, neighbors and community residents can come and, and, uh, you know, meet each other. Uh, we have a, at least one elementary school, a new elementary school, it'd be a K through eight, and a se- a potential for a second one if an active adult community, an age-restricted community, isn't built. So we have it set up, and that's one of the things we're working out at the school district is, um, setting this up so that there could be an active adult community. And of course, if there is one, it generates few to no children in it, so the second school wouldn't be needed. But we're also looking for the flexibility that should it want to be developed, um, in more of a conventional housing style, there would be another school site, um, in that neighborhood as well. Uh, we also have a fire station that we're working on and a couple of nice parks, we call a foothill park, as well as a local, um, neighborhood park that'll be adjacent to the school. What you're going to see coming before you is, uh, the review and approval of a proposed EIR addendum. Uh, we've updated a lot of the technical studies, especially related to traffic and some other items in this thing, um, as well as a specific plan amendment, that'll be coming to you in the next, you know, weeks, months, for sure. Um, the second thing will be annexing into LA Water Works, to the water district out there for water service. We will be modifying the community facilities district that was set out there. The plan for our community facilities district, and this was kind of directed by city council, um, about a year ago, was to not have a new part of the community that had a different tax rate than the existing community. So we're trying to get the tax rate to be approximately equal for both communities, so there's not a difference in housing prices or tax rates. Um, and then finally, we do have some existing track maps out there that this, this commission here approved last November, an extension for two years. Those conditions of approval were not modified at that time, but they will be modified as part of the specific plan and environmental document approval to be consistent with it all. So we don't have two sets of conditions that are different from each other. Just real quickly on the land plan. What's my move, Carleen? There we go. All right. Um, you can see, on the map here, you can see where the phase one, which is built out, the existing area. Some people don't know that Anavertae, Anavertae also included the neighborhood up on Elizabeth Lake Road to the north. But certainly the one down on Avenue S is the built-out community, that's where the Anavertae Hills, um, uh, school is located today. And essentially from that school, everything to the west is the new area. Um, there's approved tentative track maps of four hundred and forty-eight homes that are already approved in that area, as well as the revised specific plan area, which is, are the colored planning areas up on the screen there. And on that map, you can start seeing, and we'll talk more about this when we're in front of you again, where the fire station is set, where the school locations are located, and some of the recreation, uh, hamlet will be, and the parks. This is a phased project, um, so our next phase is pretty much the homes and existing tentative track maps. Those projects are almost ready to go, once we get your approvals and we get our conditions of approval. The final engineering for that is essentially complete right now, it needs to be reviewed by city staff once more. Um, but these are kind of ready-to-go neighborhoods and could be under construction, you know, within months or certainly within a year of, of approval. Uh, and then after that, we jump across Avenue S and start building out to the north of Avenue S. And then beyond. Next. I won't go into each planning area, but this is just a breakdown of what we have here. The, the one feature you'll see on this map up top is you'll see the crosshatching. North of Avenue S, there's some crosshatching in those, uh, residential neighborhoods up there. And those signify an area that could go either, uh, age-restricted or not. So that's kind of our flex area. So everything south of Avenue S was designed to be more traditional and extension of the existing Anavertae community. The total number of homes there actually turns out to be, uh, creating enough demand for one new school, which we also have Avenue S, so it becomes a bookend to the existing school out there. It would be probably a K through eight there, bookending, uh, that part of the community. North of that, if it goes active adult, there's not a need for a school. But if it doesn't go, or partially goes, then there would be another school site located up north of Avenue S. And this just gives you a sense of where those first home sites would be built, south, south of Avenue S. And the total number is four hundred and forty-eight on about a hundred and fifty-one acres of land. Uh, some of this land's already, was previously graded already, so it's pretty well along. A lot of the infrastructure's in place for that right now, including the reservoirs for the water, pump stations, sewer, and of course Avenue S. Next. Uh, this is just a, kind of a, a visual of what the, uh, the approved tentative track map looks like. Now I want to talk a little bit about what some of these neighborhoods could start looking like. Next.
Hey, pitches.
Yeah. So, you know, in the traditional neighborhoods, much like what's out there today in Anavertae, these are all single-family detached homes, um, with different architectural styles. We want to keep it a little eclectic, um, and flexible, so it doesn't look like one monolithic type of architecture throughout it. Uh, but attractive architecture, um, primarily two-story, but probably some one-stories in there or some master downs, even if they're two-story, they'll have master downs. Next. The, uh, active adult, as you can see, is north of Avenue S. We had looked at some ideas of possibly gating it, um, that's a, kind of a popular feature. We still have to work some stuff out because we do have a public road, bridge road that comes from Elizabeth Lake Road. So it would be difficult to do that, but we're, we're start, trying to be clever and see if we can't maintain that, if it becomes active adult. And again, on the active adult, primarily single, uh, so, story homes. Yes, but smaller lots for sure, um, kind of lock-and-leave type of living, you know, with not a lot of landscaping and things you have to maintain a lot.
Cash a question, what, what do the backyards look like? Do they go up straight back?
Um, they're generally flat, there is some slope here. North of Avenue S is relatively flat, so there won't be any big slopes between them. South of Avenue S, where the hills come down, there will have some more view shed, view lots and things like that, that'll be part of it.
Thank you.
This is kind of a rendering of what the, um, the hamlet we call. This is the, the neighborhood commercial, the country store area. This is an area what would include, um, a small commercial area, it would be where the community pool could be located. So it's, kind of becomes the heart of the entire Anavertae community. Um, it would also have things like potential bus shelters, transit centers. We're looking at actually doing a mail service, you know, where people would come pick up their mail in this area instead of having your mail drop to your house. It's not a, something we have totally decided on. If it's active adult, we probably would do that, if it's not, we're not sure. But the idea with that is get people showing up at the same place, saying hi to your neighbor and grabbing your mail. And it is, it'd be indoors, it would be, you know, conditioned space and, you know, secured. Um, next, this is the parks and open space plan here, as I told you, this is a, out of this whole area, it's about fourteen hundred acres that are left in the Anavertae community. Thousand of that will be open space, so something just about four hundred acres will actually be dedicated to parks, streets, roads, and the residential neighborhoods in here. And you can see on this, we have off-street bikes, uh, paths in here, so you're not sitting, riding in the streets. We have trails throughout the whole community, and these trails link up to some more regional type of trails. It's a, we see this as very pedestrian, obviously important to us is all trails kind of want to lead to the little retail and the pool area, which is literally, um, you know, a couple hundred feet from where the existing new Anav- Anavertae Hills school site sits today. Couple of features here, we have one community park location, this is kind of more, a lot, a lot of sports type of activities in there, ball fields and soccer fields, be parking lot, restrooms, things like that, that's on the north side of, uh, Avenue S. And then the next park is the neighborhood park. This actually sits adjacent to where the elementary school will be. So this would be kind of similar to what the new Anavertae Hills school park relationship is. And that's what this would be, so it'd have, again, some big play areas as well as some tot lots, trails, shaded structures and parking would be part of that. You know, just in terms of those community facilities, I keep mentioning them, but we think this is a really good feature. And I just, you know, when you're out there and you hear the homeowners, that's what they're missing out there. You know, they have some great trails and linkage and stuff go out there, and obviously the school was a massive, you know, importance to the area. It becomes kind of the heart of the community today. But in the future, be a fire station site, um, the community pool area, as well as, um, the, uh, new schools and... as well as the new schools and some new parks out there.
Now, are these, is the pool and the parks, are those part of our Parks and Recreation department in the city of Palmdale? So do we take care of maintaining and?
The parks would be. The pool would be an HOA facility.
Okay. So members outside of Anavert do not have access to the pool?
That's right.
Okay.
Next. I won't go with this, but you know, this is really set up as a sustainable type of community. So there's a lot of good design features in here. These all be solar homes. There's a lot of energy efficiency features that'll be part of each of these homes. Water efficiency obviously is going to be hugely important in how the landscape palette. It'll look different than existing Anavert, although over the years, Anavert has transitioned from something that needed a lot more water to a lot less water today. In the future, will even be more, you know, water efficient as we develop in the landscape area and what residents can do to their front yards and backyards. So this is kind of a summary of what we're doing here. Number one, you know, the reduction of the footprint, development footprint, the reduction of total number of homes obviously reduces the environmental impacts overall. So it's a much more environmentally friendly neighborhood. We have, which is increased. So just decreasing the total number of units added four, five hundred ninety acres of open space that in the previous approval, the current approval, would have been under development. So that's a lot of development areas that now have become open space. We've reduced by twelve hundred and fifty-five total units. We've added the development, a potential development of the active adult community. We have provision for these community facilities, including parks, schools, and a fire station. And a big feature as well is elimination of some of those non-essential uses. Originally, there was a golf course. Golf courses don't make any sense today, especially with water the way it's used.
Those are essential to some people.
Yeah, they are. But there's golf out here.
Interesting.
So anyways, that, you know, that's kind of the overall kind of just overview of what the community is. I know there's a lot of details that go into all this stuff, and I'm sure you'll get into it when there's a staff report that goes with it. And there's a specific plan that's this big and an environmental document this big, so you'll have plenty to look at. Do that. And, you know, obviously, we're looking forward to be in front of you when there's a staff report and a recommendation and an action. We're anxious to move forward on this project. We've been working hard, and I know staff has too for a long time. And, you know, the market is really good right now. This thing could go tomorrow, you know, it would be, you could sell out this next phase probably within a year, literally. So we really want to get going. Why the going's good, because it's not always good, as we know. So we look forward to your coming back in front of you and receiving your blessings.
Just a quick question before you leave. So I noticed, so it's the, it's an active adult community. And I was wondering, I didn't see a lot of things dealing with like youth recreational facility or a park, like a skateboard park. Is that not designed for that? Is it just particularly for adult active community folks?
No, the parks that we're showing will be public parks. So they are primarily really for neighborhoods. So there will be sports fields, tot lots, you know, and I, we'll still be working with staff on designing this once we get into that place there of what those features are. So I think it's a little bit of a blank piece of paper in terms of what is needed out there at that time. The active adult will have its own set of amenities, probably HOA maintained, and really, you know, just for residents within the active adult. So that would potentially have a clubhouse, for example, hobby rooms, you know, other features that would be attractive to people in an age-restricted community. And right now, you know, our ask for the city is, we're not obligating it. We're looking at it as seeing where the market goes. We know the market's very strong for everything right now. But sometimes that changes. So having that flexibility to go active adult or traditional will allow this community to move forward, even when things kind of get rough on one thing or the other. So.
Your swimming pool looks awesome. I mean, it looks really nice. I'm just wondering if we can get away for commissioners to go and see. I'm only kidding. Thank you.
We'll sell you a house on the west side.
No, we're swimming at McGannam, okay?
Great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Noll.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, that will move us on to our item nine B.
This item will be presented by Simran Ultra.
Hi, Simran. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Karen Neves, and I'm with the planning commission. It's good to see you all again. Let me show my screen. Long meeting. I'll try and go through this presentation very quickly, but feel free to stop me along the way to ask any questions you might have. So I'm here today to give you an overview of where we are with the general plan update. And I'll describe where we are in the process, present an overview of the policy frameworks, and then review and solicit your feedback on the key outcome goals and policies. To briefly describe the overall project schedule, over the past two and a half years, through an extensive community engagement process, we've been working with the community as well as the general plan advisory committee that the city council established. And we have developed a vision and guiding principles, created land use alternatives, selected a preferred plan, and are now developing the content of the general plan, starting with goals and policies. And we have come to you, the planning commission and the city council, along each of these phases to give you an update and get your direction as well. So as you all know, the general plan is a long-range policy document for the city that is required by the state of California. And there are certain topics that are required to be addressed, as well as some additional topics that the city may choose to address. In Palmdale's general plan update, we'll be addressing economic development, military readiness because of the presence of Plan Forty-two, and community design, as well as all the required elements. The engagement we have conducted is really one of the most extensive processes that the city has undertaken in the last twenty-plus years. I won't read through this entire list, but very briefly, we have conducted over seventeen G-PAC meetings, there's more to come, several community surveys, many pop-ups, both in-person workshops pre-COVID, as well as virtual workshops during COVID, and presentations to you and the city council. And all this work is grounded on the vision themes that were prepared early on in the process through that in community input. And these vision themes guided the developments of the alternative and also the reported alternative. And these themes address and guide the goals and policies in the general plan. And after the completion of the plan, we'll provide a framework to guide future decision-making. The land use plan that I had last presented to you back in March is the preferred land use alternative, and I'll quickly walk you through some of the major features. In the downtown, around the transit area, specific plan area, two health and, actually, three health and wellness districts. One around the regional medical center, around Kaiser, and an additional one on Forty-eighth Street, just east of, on Palmdale Boulevard, just east of Forty-eighth and Forty-fifth Streets. Two educational districts, both on Palmdale Boulevard. A regional commercial uses along AV Mall. Mix of employment uses along Palmdale Boulevard. And along, excuse me, mix of employment uses around Plant Forty-two. Mix of uses along the Palmdale Boulevard corridor, and mixed residential uses on both sides of Palmdale Boulevard. We also have village centers which are distributed across the city, and these are intended to be areas which are within a twenty-minute walk of residents and provide services, as well as amenities for residents around them. Switching over to policy frameworks. Over the last two months, we presented draft policy frameworks on several major topics that are to be addressed in the general plan. And these include both the required topics, which is land use and circulation, as well as additional topics such as economic development and military compatibility. And these build on the nineteen ninety-three general plan and are initial, are our initial ideas of for policy direction. They don't include all the goals and policies that the final general plan will cover, but instead, they provide the initial direction. And with your feedback, as well as the community's G-PACs and city council, additional policies and measures will be included in the draft general plan. We've had a series of fixed meetings over the last couple of months. These have been meetings which were primarily for the G-PAC, with the community invited as well, members of the and we had reasonably good attendance at these meetings from the public. We had about ten to twenty members of the public attend each meeting, and then we had about the same number of views on the YouTube channel where the meeting was live-cast, livestreamed, and also available for later review by anyone interested who weren't able to make the actual live meeting. All the policy framework documents have also been posted on the project website with an opportunity for viewers to provide their comments directly on the website through a tool called Conveyor, or send in written emails with any comments or questions that they might have. This series of meetings were heavily advertised, like most events, including digital press releases, a Palmdale Minute video segment, several e-blasts before each meeting, updates on social media, as well as an print advertisement in Palmdale Connections magazine. Each of these meetings and the frameworks are organized with a background on each topic, what we have heard on those topics as well from the community, and some of our initial analysis and findings. And then we provide an overview of the desired outcomes, any metrics, goals, and then an overview of goals and policies. And then following that, we had discussions including a Q and A portion of the presentation. As I said, the policy frameworks are organized by outcomes, goals, and policies. Outcomes are intended to be where we want to be in twenty forty-five. It is the time horizon of the general plan. The goals express the community values and direction. And then the policies are specific statements that guide decision-making. What's different about this general plan compared to any others you might have seen is that we also include performance metrics as well as targets. And these are intended to support an ongoing assessment of implementation. So the, and these can be either numeric or qualitative metrics that can be used by city staff and the decision-makers to evaluate how progress is occurring over the course of the general plan. This can happen on an annual basis, a biannual basis, or some other time. The goal idea is that these goals establish the desired results, and the policies provide the direction on how to achieve those goals. And the metrics are used to evaluate how progress is being achieved. This is essentially reiterating what I said earlier that the, what I'm presenting today is not an exhaustive list of actual documents that were presented or attached to your agenda packet, have detailed lists of the goals, policies, and the outcomes. And we presented highlights to the G-PAC and received feedback from them. Now I'll walk through at a high level the goals and the anticipated outcomes by topic. You'll see the same structure on the next several slides. The goals are on the left, and these are intended to lead to the outcomes that are on the right. And as you'll see as I go through these, many of the goals and outcomes are cross-cutting across topics and are tied to the vision themes that I described earlier. So with regard to land use design and housing goals and outcomes, you know, it was interesting to hear the discussion about the two affordable housing projects that you reviewed today. There is, what we've heard from the community and the goals and outcomes reflect that there is a desire to see a range of housing opportunities and types in the city. And that these are distributed across the city to to balance how growth occurs within Palmdale. To accompany the range of housing opportunities and types, there are, there is a desire to create walkable, complete neighborhoods. So you can, most residents are able to walk to services, retail, et cetera, and village centers within a twenty-minute walk. Other goals and outcomes are related to excuse me, related to improving the economy with more areas and designations for more more jobs. And these are primarily focused in the area around Plant Forty-two. They also serve as a buffer to the activities that are ongoing on, on the, on Plant Forty-two and to protect its missions. Goals related to mobility are, include safe and comfortable travel for all modes, ages, and abilities. And to encourage active transportation, which have health benefits, reduce vehicle miles travel, and improve air quality. There is also the desire to ensure that traffic does continue, vehicular traffic does continue to flow smoothly. These aren't necessarily either or, but it's a matter of both and. And luckily, Palmdale's roadways are able to accommodate all modes of transportation. Economic development is a very important topic in the city, and the goals for that are tied to diversifying Palmdale's economy. As you know, the economy today is very focused on aerospace, and there are the ups and downs tied with with federal contracts related to military investment. And those will continue, and the dependence on aerospace will continue for a while and continue to be enhanced. But the desire is to diversify the economy with bringing in additional types of jobs, especially those related to film, private aerospace, as well as expanding tourism. And I'll just make a note that the emphasis on film-related, film production and post-production-related opportunities are tied to the expansion of the thirty-mile T and Z, which is related to where film is, where film production can occur, and is tied to the way contracts related to movie-making are structured. Another important economic development goal is tied to providing high-quality and accessible education. Educational opportunities both in terms of higher education, as well as vocational training. Military compatibility goals and outcomes are tied to preserving and enhancing Plant Forty-two's mission, as well as increasing jobs in aerospace and supply chain industries. Um, other goals relate to ensuring that, uh, appropriate types of development occur close by as well as, um, avoiding incompatible developments which might affect, uh, the outcomes that I just described. Um, there are also, um, goals relates to coordinating future development and infrastructure improvements and to enhance communications with Plant Forty Two and, and the Palmdale community to ensure that, um, there is a understanding of the importance of aerospace, um, to, to the city. While the, uh, resilience, sustainability and climate goals are primarily focused on aligning with state requirements, um, these also have some cross-cutting benefits that, uh, related to mobility, land use, health, uh, equity, et cetera. And these include reducing vehicle mile travels and greenhouse gases, um, as well as reducing dependence on fossil fuels, uh, and reducing water use to extend, um, extend the water supply that's available. Goals related to safety include minimizing wildfire, flooding and earthquakes, um, safe evacuation and improved communication during emergencies. Uh, health and equity goals, um, are, um, tied to improving, uh, access to quality healthcare in the city. Um, while the city doesn't directly provide healthcare, uh, there are several ways city can facilitate improved healthcare and in the land use element, um, through the implementation of the three health and wellness districts I described on the land use map, um, there is, um, the city is, can encourage the, the provision of healthcare facilities and in addition to that, work with transit agencies to improve, uh, transit service to these facilities. Uh, other equity outcomes include expanded job training and higher education opportunities for youth in Palmdale, um, rehabilitation of existing housing, uh, which is much cheaper than new construction by the way, um, so that, um, there is safe and sanitary housing for all residents, uh, improving the range of exercise opportunities and, uh, policies to improve air quality a, and continued improvement to public safety. Uh, parks and trail, um, and recreation-related goals and outcomes, um, it are, include, uh, establishing parks and trails that are, uh, within twenty minutes' walk of most residents in the city and new parks are, uh, to be located in areas that are deficient in parks, uh, many of these being on the, on the eastern part of, of Palmdale. Uh, there's also goals to enhance recreation programming for all ages as well as providing culturally diverse programming that, uh, meets the needs of the demographics in the city. Um, and now briefly, I'll, um, just overview what, uh, we heard from the G-PAC and the community, uh, on the, on the policy framework I just presented. Uh, many reiterated what is already included, um, but some of the new ideas that were mentioned include, um, providing education, uh, about gray water use in the city, expanding broadband access, um, desire for more parks and open space, um, dispersing affordable housing throughout the city and not concentrating in one area, um, as you heard earlier in, uh, earlier this evening. Uh, other, uh, comments we received included more street lighting, um, bike facilities that are safe and com- comfortable so that they actually get used, um, designating truck routes away from sensitive uses such as, um, housing, uh, or senior housing, uh, schools, um, children, daycare, et cetera, um, and, um, finally quiet zones at railway crossings so that the trains, um, don't need to blow their horns, uh, as they pass through the community. There was also added emphasis on private aerospace, film production and other tech jobs as well as environmental tourism. And finally, um, uh, with regard to health equity, parks and recreation, this was the meeting we just had last night, um, we heard, uh, some thoughts about coordinating with the school districts to, uh, have educational campaigns related to mental health, um, uh, other education campaigns, um, about health benefits of, uh, fresh produce, uh, more street trees, uh, supporting, uh, city providing support for community groups, but keeping in mind that the city would need to prioritize what, um, what can be done with limited funds. Uh, one other topic that came up, uh, was related to concentration of certain uses in certain parts of town including alcohol sales, uh, convenience stores, tobacco sales, uh, as well as fast food, uh, outlets. And with that, I'll pause for any questions. That's really the very, very quick overview of, um, what we've spent the last several months, uh, developing and sharing with the, with the G-PAC and the community.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I appreciate, and thank you to our G-PAC members who are here tonight. I didn't acknowledge you earlier, but thank you. I know you've had so many meetings and, um, based on what we've seen, you've been doing a heck of a job covering so many things. I want to say thank you for thinking of the quiet railway zone area 'cause I happen to hear that train often and it's really irritating. I think we know you're here. Why are you making this noise? I don't get it. Um, but yeah, any comments on this presentation?
Chair Nimitz?
Yes.
We, we do have an e-comment as well.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Let's start with our e-comment.
Read that now? Okay, it was from a guest user. Uh, the position was neutral. Uh, please see in the letter to the Planning Commission dated August tenth, twenty twenty-one, which was submitted by Beldell LLC to the commission in care of Ms. Inman for your consideration. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So we were handed in our stackle papers this evening, a letter from Lisa Quaitman of Beldell LLC, if you've had a chance to take a peek at that. Can you give us some insight into that? She's talking about their, their property that Beld- Beldell LLC owns. Um, southeast quadrant of Palmdale Boulevard is site one and site two is Pa- Palmdale Boulevard and Fifth Street West kind of bordered by Palmdale Regional Medical Center. In reading this, I think she has some good points to, to, um, kind of make it a little bit more flexible than it sounds like it potentially might be, but I'm not as familiar with your wording as, um, I should be probably.
Megan, would you like to respond to that?
Yes. So, um, she is basically talking about how the property is going to be re-designated as regional commercial and the intent behind that was the fact that it is freeway oriented. Um, it could accommodate a large commercial development, uh, that would benefit the region.
So what is it zoned now? She's saying they're up-zoning it to a C four?
I would have to look.
Okay. And I noticed on, on, I think that was the one she was saying, ideally she would like it to be a little more broad range like you're, um, contemplating for the Animal Valley Mall area, so. I don't know how s-
No, I would just like to have, um, to add, we, we have had many conversations with this, this property owner and we will continue to, to do so moving forward.
Okay, to try and incorporate what they're trying to get done with their property.
Certainly.
Okay. All right.
Well, I, I do want to commend you and the, uh, G-PAC team. You guys are doing an awesome job. Quite thorough, um, quite comprehensive. That's just actually understandable what you guys are doing and I commend all of you for doing that hard work, uh, and, and we see it in your presentation. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I think, I, I know that, um, Commissioner Smith is concerned about, uh, youth activity, youth involvement. I've seen a lot of that being taken place in, in what we're seeing coming out of your hard work, so.
Yeah, I appreciate you following up on that. Thank you.
And just for your information, Carleen did look it up and currently it's zoned C three.
It is.
Which is community commercial in the land use designation.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, um, yeah, I real, I'm impressed with the way everything is coming together and looking so, so thorough. It, I knew in the beginning when we said we were going to revise the general plan, I knew it was, um, a long-term thing, but, uh, seeing all of this work and energy and everything, it's, it is very impressive to me and I like that people are being involved and you're, we're listening to them as a city, as a G-PAC, um, and, and responding and doing the best that we can to include, um, suggestions and ideas we're getting from them, so. I am impressed with it. And I appreciate your bringing this to our meeting and keeping us up to date on our general plan updates. Are there any questions for Simran or Megan?
Um, all of these, um, districts and so forth are, are pretty, pretty broad. Is there going to be flexibility as time goes on to, um, kind of tinker with them as we go? Are they going to be flexible or are they going to be, once the, the district, districts are established of where things are going to go? Is there no flexibility? So for instance, if you have like the medical district by the hospital, um, is that only for medical offices or can you incorporate into that, um, housing units? So, I mean, I think all of us here, by the time this stuff is all built out, we're going to be old enough, we might be in one of those nursing homes and I would want to be in a nursing home right by the hospital so I can walk to the doctor's office and I can wa, you know, I can live right there and walk to everything. And I don't know if you have a housing element, uh, as part of that medical district, um, that you're proposing. And also, you know, when we have a hospital, I mean, it'd be nice to have lofts there for doctors when you're bringing doctors in and they do their, um, you know, their rounds or whatever, um, working at the hospital and maybe they could walk over to a loft where they live or stay when they're, you know, working. So I don't know if you have a housing, uh, apart built into those medical districts or not or if all of these different districts have flexibility like that.
Um, that's a very good question, Commissioner. Um, yes, the medical, the health and wellness district does have flexibility. It's not limited to only medical uses because we understand that, um, there needs to be supportive uses of, besides the medical uses. So they've, the, um, th- that district would allow, um, supportive retail, uh, hotels, uh, labs, um, medical office, um, and, uh, housing related to those. So assisted living is probably something that would be permitted. Um, so, um, so to answer your question, yes, there is that flexibility. Um, I'll also note that the general plan establishes the broad, um, direction for land uses and then these are implemented by the zoning code, um, update that will happen, that, um, that will happen concurrently.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, if there are no more comments, I want to say thank you very much for your presentation and thank you, G-PAC members, for all of your hard work getting, bringing this to us.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All righty. And Ms. Taggart, do you have any other staff communications for us?
I'll be brief. The only thing I wanted to add is that there is a tentative agenda for a couple items on the September Planning Commission meeting and we are continuing our efforts for the Avenue Q, um, corridor study. So there is going to be a workshop on August twenty-fifth that, uh, starts at six P M, I believe. Yeah, six to seven thirty and it is via Zoom and there's information, um, on the city website for that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Doran, do you have any staff communications? Do you know how to use your microphone?
It's not working. I'm watching.
We don't want to hear you really.
It, it may or may not be on, but I do not have any communications. Thank you.
It's like flickering. Oh, it's getting brighter. Ooh.
There we go.
All right. Planning Commission communications. All right. I want to say thank you to Mr. Doran for our density bonus agreement training, meeting us before our meeting and educating us on that because that was an important component of tonight's meeting, so.
Can I add just one thing? I want to thank, uh, uh, Chair, uh, Nimitz for attending my daughter's, uh, commission. She was commissioned as the second lieutenant in the United States Air Force and she gave her some inspiring words and I really appreciate that. I see my dear brother Juan Blanco in the audience. He helped secure Dr., is it attorney? No, not attorney, general, Dr. David Smith for being there as well. And JJ, for, uh, our city manager showed up and gave some encouraging words to our young people and to her, so much appreciated.
Oh, thank you. And we went through the whole ceremony and then her boyfriend proposed to her. It was wild.
Yes, he did. Yes, he did.
Very cool, so. So, all right, and the city concert series is starting this Friday. You all should have received tickets to it. Yes, Chris?
We're having a youth cleanup tomorrow at McAdam Park.
Tomorrow?
Um, at four o'clock if anybody wants to join.
It's the couple of, um, it's with the youth in the area that live in the area. That is quite timely, isn't it?
It is. So that's tomorrow and the twenty-eighth, we're back to Barrel Springs with the youth group and the, the usual suspects.
All right, four P M on, oh, tomorrow's Friday the thirteenth, isn't it?
Uh-huh.
Ooh, okay. All right, so that will bring us to our adjournment, to our regular Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, September ninth at seven P M. Thank you all for coming and staying awake because this is way later than your normal here.
It's the latest one you guys have.
Thank you, everyone.